Okay, he's starting the stream.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our public hearing for January the 14th. This is, I'm Kevin Murdock, Mayor of Oak Bay, and I'll be chairing tonight's public hearing pertaining to proposed bylaws 3531 dot 105 for the property located at 1538 Monterey Avenue. I want to start by acknowledging that we, and the land in which we gather is the traditional territories of the Coast and Strait Salish people, specifically known as, as the Kwunghen-speaking people known today as the Songhees and the Squamalnations, and that their historic connections to these lands continue to this day. Before we begin, and welcome on webcast, please be advised that this public hearing is being live webcast, and the recording will be archived on the district's website for future viewing. Personal information, including your name, municipality of residence, and opinions may be collected and disclosed as part of council proceedings on the video. When presenting to council, if you are acting as a representative of a resident of Oak Bay or speaking of another party, please ensure you are not disclosing any personal information about that person for which you do not have consent to do so. This public hearing is convened pursuant to section 465 of the Local Government Act to allow the public to make the representations to council respecting matters contained in the following proposed bylaw, Zoning Amendment Bylaw 2020 number 3531 dot 105. Just going to give a quick overview of the process that will be following in tonight's public hearing. First, everyone wishing to speak will be given an opportunity to be heard. I ask that speakers limit their initial comments to a maximum of five minutes so that everyone has an opportunity to speak, and once everyone has had a chance to speak, those wishing to speak again may do so if they have new points to present. Please keep comments respectful of council, staff, and other members of the public. All comments are to be directed to mayor and council and must relate to the proposed bylaw. The purpose of the public hearing is to give council an opportunity to listen to the views expressed by the public. Council is not here to debate the merits of the application tonight. Council members may ask clarifying questions of speakers to better understand what they have heard here at the public hearing. The public hearing is not intended as an opportunity for the public to learn details about the application. This opportunity occurred through previous meetings and presentations and within the staff reports provided to date. The public hearing is an opportunity to hear from the public on the rezoning application. It's important to note that the lease with the current tenant, Verx, is not part of what is up for discussion tonight. As such, I ask that comments be limited to the rezoning. As chair, I will reserve the right to conclude any presentations made by any member of the public, council, or staff that does not relate to the proposed bylaw or is disrespectful towards any other person. Finally, council members are here to listen to the public's opinion with an open mind. No one here has prejudged the outcome of this application. The order of business for the public hearing follows a formal seven-step process. Staff will introduce the proposed bylaw. Number two, council will formally receive written submissions provided prior to the public hearing. Number three, late submissions will be read aloud and formally received. Number four, would normally provide space for an applicant to present their proposal, however, as the district is acting as the applicant, all information will be provided in step one, the staff introduction. Step five, as council will ask clarifying questions of the applicant or staff. Step six, members of the public will be invited to provide comment on the bylaw. And seven, the public hearing is then recessed or closed as determined by council motion. So with that, we'll begin. I just, I now invite staff to introduce the Purpose of Zoning Amendment Bylaw 351 dot 105. And I believe they're in via conference call. And I, there should also be a phone number on the agenda if people are queuing to line up, and it should be visible, we think, on the, on the live stream at the lower part of your screen on a, on a whiteboard posted there. Are staff ready to present?
I'm just waiting to hear from Mrs. Baugh.
Ms. Bay, can you hear us? If you are speaking, we cannot hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now. All right, the unmute button works. We are good to go. Go ahead, Ms. Bay.
Excellent, thank you very much, your worship. The district acquired the 1538 Monterey Avenue property in 2016 as a strategic holding.
Ms. Bay, can you, can you speak up just a little bit? We are having, it's just, I think it's, I want to make sure everybody can hear clearly. Go ahead.
All right, thank you very much, your worship. I'll just start out by providing a little bit of background on how we got to this point. The district acquired the 1538 Monterey Avenue property in 2016 as a strategic holding. At this point, the district has not determined the ultimate use of the property. Ultimate use for this property and a property similar to this on Hampshire Road will be determined in the development of the Oak Bay Village Area Plan, which is anticipated to be undertaken in the next few years and will involve significant public input and consultation. That planning process will assess residential and commercial land uses as well as transportation and parking needs in the Oak Bay Avenue area. The Monterey property being considered tonight was purchased using money contained in the land sales reserve. Just for clarity, no monies from the Village Parking Reserve Fund were used for this acquisition. Funds collected over the years from businesses for area parking remain available. As reported on in the district's five-year financial plan, the district has just under a million dollars set aside in the Village Area Parking Reserve Fund. As mentioned already, there'll be no specific use to the municipality for the property at 1538 Monterey Avenue until the Village Area Plan is developed. So we have the current use proposed, but the long-term use has not yet been determined. Some time ago, the Victoria Immigrant and Refugee Center Society, also known as Verx, approached the district to use this property to house refugees in a welcome house model that provides live-on, live-in onsite support for newly arriving refugees. As well as paying reduced rents, Verx committed to upgrading the building interior, which was in rather bad shape, to paying utilities and to taking care of day-to-day maintenance of the property. Council considered Verx's request and followed, following a required public notification process back in the summer, approved a lease of the Monterey property starting on September 1st, 2020, and extending to July 31st, 2023. The time horizon of the lease matches up with when it is anticipated that the district will have greater clarity over ultimate use of the property, and council has made no commitments beyond the timeframe of the lease. The lease signed by the district and Verx acknowledged that the present zoning allows for occupancy by a maximum of three unrelated individuals. To allow for the desired use as a welcome house, a rezoning approval is required to allow for congregate housing on this site. As the owner of the property, the district has submitted an application for rezoning. The rezoning application is the reason for the public hearing this evening. To be clear, the lease is not under consideration as the implemented lease agreement is independent of the zoning. The district's planning manager, Deborah Jensen, is prepared to provide an overview of the rezoning application. Thank you, your worship. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Bay, and welcome, Ms. Jensen.
Thank you, your worship. As indicated, the bylaw under consideration for this evening's agenda is bylaw number 3531 point 105, which is a site-specific amendment to allow for a congregate housing use at 1538 Monterey Avenue. A district-owned residential property, the Victoria Immigrant and Refugee Center Society is proposing to use the Monterey home for a mix of refugees, including couples, individuals, and single parents, for up to a maximum of eight people, as well as providing for an onsite caretaker. In addition to the accommodation, the society would like to offer tenants a range of onsite services to help incorporate into the community, including, for example, language instruction, shopping and cooking lessons, and gardening. The parking requirement of three vehicles for the proposed use is met through the existing onsite parking area, and any physical alterations that may be undertaken to the building would require approval by the district and which may require a building permit. The bylaw in question would not change the zoning of the property from the current RS5, which is a one-family residential use. Rather, for this site alone, it introduces a site-specific use, again, which is for this property only, a congregate housing use, which would permit up to a maximum of eight persons and two domestic staff. Amending the RS5 zone to include congregate housing on this site would provide for the additional people beyond what is normally considered a family and would address the need for domestic support. To clarify, the congregate housing is defined in the zoning bylaw as the sharing of a building of residential use by three or more unrelated persons along with domestic-serving support of not more than two persons. So this type of use, the congregate housing, can take place in a single-family home. As per content within the lease agreement, the district initiated the rezoning process by bringing forward a report at the November 16th Committee of the Whole Meeting. Council subsequently gave first and second readings on November 23rd and passed a resolution that the public hearing for this bylaw will be held on January 14th this evening. Following first and second readings, a public hearing notice was placed in the December 31st and the January 7th additions of the Oak Bay News and posted to the district website. Notification was distributed to all properties within a 50-meter radius on December 23rd, amounting to approximately 60 adjacent properties. Sanich has been posted on the property itself, and all materials related to the public hearing are posted on the district website for public review. Ultimately, council has the unfettered statutory discretion to consider and make a decision on the proposed zoning amendment. As such, following tonight's public hearing, the bylaw will be considered for, by council for third reading and adoption on January 25th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Next, we receive, formally receive the written submissions in our agenda package. Could we have the motion that the written submissions received and distributed prior to the public hearing, as attached to agenda item four, be received? Moved and seconded, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? None opposed, thank you. Has the corporate officer received any additional submissions after the agenda was published and before the deadline of 3:00 PM today?
Yes, your worship, we have. In addition to the 12 submissions that you just formally received, since the agenda was published on January the 8th, the district has received an additional 41 submissions, which have been appended to the online agenda so that council and the public can review that. Of those additional 41 submissions, 36 expressed support for the rezoning, three were opposed to the rezoning, and two provided comments or had questions. Of the two who were opposed, I thought it was important to note that two of those approved the use for a short-term solution and encouraged council to consider longer-term options, and one expressed concern that the bylaw did not specify the type of congregate housing and indicated they would be supportive if the bylaw was specific to refugee transition. And one expressed concerns with the suitability of the facility to house 10 unrelated individuals during COVID. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, and just for clarity, there's been no, no additional written after 3:00 PM to read aloud today?
No, your worship.
Okay, thank you. Maybe... Okay, we don't need to have a motion to receive since there's no more to do. Do we? Ms. Williams?
Yes, your worship, just to receive the ones that, the 41 I just indicated.
Oh, okay, after that. Thank you. Can I have the motion? Do people have it? Go ahead, Council Green.
I'll move to receive the additional 41 submissions.
Moved and seconded, thank you. All those in favor? Any opposed? None opposed, thank you. Next, we will now seek further public input from those who have chosen to speak to us this evening. As I mentioned in the overview of protocols, everyone wishing to speak will be given an opportunity to be heard, and I ask that speakers limit their initial comments to a maximum of five minutes so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. As of 9:00 AM this morning, we had two individuals register to speak at this hearing, so I'll have a first call on those individuals in the order in which they registered, and once they have spoken, we will open the mic to others who have joined the meeting by Zoom or telephone. A reminder to those watching, the number to call to join the meeting is provided on the public hearing agenda, as well as on the meetings page of the district's website and civic web portal. Your name and comments may be recorded in the report of the public hearing and form part of the permanent public record. Begin your presentation by clearly stating your name and municipality of residence. The first individual calling in is Chris Kershaw.
Good evening. My name is Chris Kershaw, and I'm a resident of Oak Bay. I, I've been in touch with the council about this as secretary of the Rotary Club of Oak Bay. We want to express our strong support for this rezoning application. We became aware of the project about a year ago, and we were excited by the opportunities it provided within Oak Bay to support vulnerable refugees starting out their life in Canada. We made a donation to Verx early last year and ran some Concerts for Good courses for the benefit of Verx in connection with this. And also, we've done some gardening work. We've had volunteers over at the property helping out with getting it ready for use. One thing that particularly attracted us to this proposal was that the welcome house wants to involve local Oak Bay residents as volunteers in supporting people coming to the house. For example, with getting them acclimatized to Oak Bay, wherever the library is, where the grocery store is, using the bus service, but also things like meeting up with them to discuss how they're getting along, helping them with their English, and so on. And that's really one of the key issues that has attracted us to become involved in this project. We see it as very positive and something that our members can assist with.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kershaw. I'm assuming you're finished. I didn't hear. Thank you. Goodbye. I just want to make sure you've said anything. You weren't just cut off.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
You're completed, okay. Thank you very much for calling in. Next up, we have Martin Cowden. If you could just unmute and again state your name and municipality of residence. And Mr. Cowden, are you on the line?
I am, I'm just unmuting.
Okay, great.
Thank you for this opportunity, mayor and council, to speak. I live in Sanich. I represent the Oak Bay Village Business Improvement Association, and I'm also a business operator in the village of Oak Bay. I speak on behalf of the village businesses who are concerned about the ongoing use for the two properties, 1538 Monterey and 1531 Hampshire. The original idea, as made clear earlier, was for the expansion of village. We applaud the efforts and the cooperation of Oak Bay, its residents, and other groups that wish to support Verx and immigrants, new immigrants, in our community. But we wish to emphasize that those two properties are identified for village expansion purposes, including culinary uses, public gatherings, community events, et cetera. So while we do not oppose, and I wrote a letter submitting that, we do not oppose what mayor and council are doing. We do not oppose what Verx is doing. We do not oppose what the people in our community are reaching out to help these unfortunate refugees who have come to our neighborhood. We want to support and help that process. Indeed, some of the businesses made significant contributions to make this happen, albeit they not knowing the two properties were targeted for this purpose. Nevertheless, we wish to emphasize that the Oak Bay Village Business Improvement Association still wants to emphasize that those properties are desired by us to expand the use in the village to provide parking and services. And it seems like a terrible comparison when you think of a stranded refugee coming from a worn, torn place versus assisting businesses in the village. But the services in the village support a greater community as well, and there's room for both, and there's other properties in Oak Bay that could be acquired to do this and perhaps more aptly. Our concern is that once this property is rezoned, it's going to stay that way, and the longer it's used for this purpose, the more entrenched that trend will be with the expectation of staying there. So we have our concerns as to whether this property will ever be released to the village expansion project. And I heard, and I've been assured by mayor and council, that there will be the opportunity to input into the village, the future village community plan, and we look forward to make representation there. So our objections are, how does this ever come to an end? How does one ever say, this has been wonderful, now we're going to move somewhere else? Is it permanent? Well, I know it's a two-and-a-half-year lease. There's one other important point, and that is the property's been leased to do something that it's not zoned to carry out. If, in fact, this property can be changed in a public hearing and the zoning changed, why can't other properties also be changed? Is this special treatment being given for two fundamental reasons? One, a very good cause, and two, the fact that the properties are held by the municipality. So if the next-door neighbor to either of these houses wished to have their properties rezoned for congregate, maybe because there's some wonderful students that wanted to move in and live there, well, why wouldn't they be considered? And so the domino effect is, how does this change our neighborhood? We embrace what Verx is doing. We want to help those people that have come here to our doorsteps. We have an obligation to help those people. So I want to emphasize that, and I also want to emphasize that the Oak Bay Village business community sees those properties as the only viable perspective to expand the village business area. Those are our perspectives. We applaud you for moving ahead on this and doing what you're doing, supporting people in need, and we all have an obligation to do so. Indeed, the village businesses do that on a regular basis, whether it's helping out in the community with sports teams or other functions, other service groups, such as Chris would represent, and other groups. So we're in favor of helping the community, and we're in favor of helping those most in need. But our contribution depends on a viable village environment, and I don't need to emphasize the stress that businesses are feeling in these COVID days, or that many of them teeter on the verge of failure or success because of, no fault of their own, but this COVID restrictions. So as we look forward...
Mr. Cowden?
We wish to emphasize that we want to participate in future discussions and planning.
Thank you, Mr. Cowden. Thank you. Thank you for your time. If you wish to add more afterwards, you're more than welcome to do so. I just want to keep us on the time allocations per speaker. Thank you very much for that. If there's anybody who wishes to call in, we will welcome you, and I believe Ms. Williams will just allow them in one at a time. Is that correct?
That's correct, your worship. Currently, we have three members of the public sitting in the meeting, so if we could just ask if you're wanting to speak at this time and you've called in on a phone, if you could use star nine to raise your hand to indicate that you wish to speak, we will be able to identify you and call on you by your last three digits, your phone number. If you've come in on a smartphone device into the Zoom meeting by link, if you could use the raised hand in Zoom and indicate that you wish to speak, we would then recognize you.
Thank you. So star nine, if you're on the phone, and raise your hand within the Zoom window itself on the computer.
We have a member of the public who'd like to speak, so the individual with the last three digits of your phone, 747, if you could use star six to, or, yes, star six to unmute yourself and introduce yourself, giving your name and your municipality of residence before you start your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm just checking whether I have the floor.
You do, and welcome.
Super. Hi, I'd like to introduce myself. I'm David Lau, Executive Director of Victoria Immigrant Refugee Center. Just want to say thank you for your time, mayor and council. I appreciate all the time and effort you put into these difficult decisions and the processes that you uphold. As the executive director of the organization that assembled the facility, I just want to point out that it's been, first off, a real pleasure spending so much time in Oak Bay, getting to know the hundreds of Oak Bay residents who have given so generously of their time and labor and materials and kindness to help us get to this point where we could fulfill our obligation that we made to the district of Oak Bay to get the houses in the condition that we say we are going to get them in. The other thing I wanted to mention was that I was quite awestruck and deeply impressed at the number of letters of support that came in when Oak Bay residents were asked to voice their opinions. I believe there was about 50, 50 people that took the time to write in and write, you know, quite beautiful things about what this means to them as members of the Oak Bay community, what their hopes and aspirations are to contribute and to participate and to join in the effort that we're, of creating services at the house. It's really meaningful for us because we focus on being a community organization. And all the different communities that we work in, we embed ourselves within the communities, and we rely on the volunteers who help us operationalize our plans. As an agency, we work regularly with about 200 volunteers a year. Those numbers have greatly blossomed since we moved into Oak Bay and started this, this project. Another aspect that I'd like to point out, it was when I actually went to your webpage and I was looking at the council priorities for 2019, 2022. And I just want to point out that I feel that this project really speaks to each one of those five priorities. Ensuring access to diverse housing options within the built environment is practically this, this proposal that we put forward. The buildings were existing, they were in need of repair. We, we, we took efforts and did fundraising and created a viability at those buildings, increased value to all the people of Oak Bay, making sure that those houses weren't to blight in the neighborhood, and that they look good and they'll continue to get better and better. In terms of diverse housing options, this project is completely unique on Vancouver Island, and it really speaks to the vision and the leadership of Oak Bay mayors and council that helped support this project and get us to this point. In terms of achieving sustainable service delivery, there's a couple of things I'd like to point out. In terms of the purchase decision of those two houses, we were quite pleased to be able to come in and actually help create a sustainable environment for those houses. It was clear that they weren't actually working that well. They weren't occupied, and the one had fallen into a state of disrepair. So in terms of sustaining those houses and creating a service model that fit, and then actually... sustaining those houses and creating a service model that fit, and then actually creates a revenue stream for Oak Bay, we're quite proud to say that we feel that fits that criteria as well. In terms of providing service excellence, I already mentioned that this is a first in Vancouver Island. And in terms of service excellence, this is a real leadership credit, a real merit to the District of Oak Bay, and we're very proud. And we're going to work hard to uphold our side of the bargain and make this a real benefit to the members of Oak Bay. In terms of enhancing and promoting quality of life and sense of place, I can't think of things, I can't think of a thing that would make people feel better about all of the benefits of being Canadian, the merits of citizenship and good citizenship and supporting people who strive to become members of Canada, to become citizens and to walk with us, to shop with us, and become friends and be part of our communities, and in the long term, part of our family. I believe this quality of life aspect might be the most meaningful. And I really think it's a unique opportunity to achieve this council priority. And finally, demonstrating leadership and fostering community health and resilience. Once again, this is a leadership moment and something that people in Oak Bay should be really proud of. In my 10 years as Executive Director of Berks, I have run many programs throughout the different districts and municipalities and the cities of southern Vancouver Island. It's always been an absolute pleasure when I've delivered services and workshops. Usually in Oak Bay, they're standing room only. People here are sincerely concerned, sincerely interested in participating in the services that we offer and making this a better place to live. And I just like to underline that, you know, the people in Oak Bay, they've really proven their generosity, kindness, and their sincere dedication to fostering communities that need support. Anyway, I don't want to overreach my five-minute time. Thank you so much for everything you've done, and I hope your deliberations go well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lau. You're within a few seconds of being five minutes exactly. So well done. I believe up next on the agenda, we have a Mr. Miller. If you could unmute yourself. Is that star six on the phone or on Zoom?
It's on Zoom.
Yeah.
Okay, we can hear you. Go ahead.
All right, cool. Hello, my name is Stephen Miller. I am awesome. I just wanted to say that I really appreciate all the effort that's been done for the house and everything. And it's a great plan. It's a very good plan, in fact. And actually, the rest of the plan is simple. I fly to the moon. I shrink the moon. I grab the moon. I sit on the toilet. Wait, what?
Mr. Miller, I believe you're done. Are you?
I'm sorry?
Are you finished?
Uh, yes.
All right.
I appreciate you for having me on here. It's an honor.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Who's up next? Last three digits, one, three, four. If you could hit star six, you are welcome to join us at this time. In case anybody that was not heard, if you have the phone number with the last three digits, one, three, four, you can hit star six and be unmuted. We're not being, we're not able to hear the person with last three digits, one, three, four. Oh, we are. We're getting them up now. Again, if you could just state your name and municipality of residence to begin, please.
Hello, to the participant with the last three digits, one, three, four, you've joined the meeting. If you would like to provide your name and your municipality of residence, and then address your comments to council, that would be wonderful.
I understand they are unmuted. Is that correct?
They are unmuted.
For some reason, we can't hear you. It's possible that the phone that you're calling in on is also muted. You may want to just check to see if your mute is pushed on your phone, in case that is blocking us from hearing you.
So the individual with the last three digits, one, three, four, if you can hear us, would you lower your hand? It's muted again now. Okay, so there you go. You are unmuted if you would like to start speaking now.
For some reason, we are unable to hear you, even though it's showing as unmuted. Again, if you could check your device to make sure the device itself is not unmuted. And we're certainly welcome, willing to just wait if you want to hang up and call back in again. We can do that as well and try it again.
To the individual with the last three digits, one, three, four, we can see that you are trying to communicate with council. Can I ask that you hang up, and I will call you on my cellphone, and I will put that to a microphone so that you can speak to council?
Okay, we'll try this. So for all those watching at home, being entertained by our technical issues here, this is one of those things we are required to continue to have, public hearings, and we're embracing the technology available to us. We wanted to make this as open as possible and use both computer-based and voice technologies so everybody could attend. So this is us having a first go at it and seeing how it works. We are now calling the person back to see if we can reach them directly and put them on speakerphone.
Hello? Hello, I'm just going to put you on speakerphone. Just one moment.
Hello, and welcome to the public hearing. If you could just state your name and municipality of residence for the record.
My name is Ian. Can you hear me now?
We can. Just speak up and we can hear you.
My name is Ian Robertson. I live at 515 Alkland Road. I previously submitted a written submission to the meeting. And I would like to just deal with a couple of points very briefly. In connection with the Business Improvement Association gentleman that spoke before, I'd like to remind council that the purchase of the two properties was presumably done for the purposes of development of the downtown. I'm getting a lot of echo. Are you hearing me?
We can hear you. It doesn't surprise me that you're getting some echo because you're being amplified in this room. The echo is not coming through to us. So if you're comfortable with it, we'll continue. If not, we can try you again through the dial-in number.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm trying to use a simple phone. In conjunction with what the Business Improvement Association speaker spoke before, the two properties were purchased at different times, presumably for the purpose of the development of the downtown core. If it is not the intention of council to use these properties for the development of core, I think that there has to be some public explanation of what is going on, because that's the assumption of the Downtown Business Improvement Association. It's the million dollars you've acquired for the purposes of augmenting parking. And having done that, it then becomes a bit of a mystery as to why you have been soliciting tenants such as the one you've got for the purpose that we now see in front of us. And what we have now developed is a situation of a wonderful project, which could have been placed almost anywhere in Oak Bay, and there are many, many other houses that are in need of remediation that are close by that could be considered possible. But we've chosen these two houses, I guess because they were vacant. But having done that, having entered into the memorandum of understanding, and ended the lease, and encouraging them to spend all the thousands of hours and hundreds of dollars, thousands of dollars in material, we now have a situation where those pieces of property are not available for development of the downtown core into the immediate future. And three years of the lease is not going to do it. You wouldn't in your heart be prepared to kick them out of that in the end of three years. Whatever happens, we are now in a conundrum that when the time comes that the council wishes to use the property, you're going to have to find new accommodation for them and help them to find accommodation that they can move into without a whole lot of effort. And so while I don't oppose what you're doing right now, because simply it's the 12-step of a 12-step process that's going on here, I find it regrettable that we got to this far without any public discourse on this matter. And I'll rest my case at that point. Thank you.
Thank you very much for calling in, Mr. Robertson. Is there anyone else, Ms. Williams, who has called into the line?
Nobody at this time, Your Worship.
Okay, thank you. Just given the delay in the webcast, we have nobody else calling in at this point. So if nobody else calls in, that will conclude the public hearing. But I'll just give it another 30 seconds or so, just to give people the opportunity to call in. Again, the phone number is on the agenda and should be visible at the bottom of the screen if you can see the details there. And since we've had the first round, I will do this officially, since we actually are granted three rounds. Speakers are invited to speak a second time if they are providing newer additional information. So I will make the second call now for public input. A reminder to those watching, the number to call to join the meeting is provided on the public hearing agenda, as well as on the meetings page of the district's website and the civic web portal. That forms my second call for input.
I just say that reading the submissions-
I'm sorry, can I just ask who's speaking?
It's Chris Kershaw.
Oh, welcome back, Mr. Kershaw.
I read the submissions on the website, and I was touched by the support from so many people around Oak Bay for this project. And it echoes the reasons why we're very supportive of it. That's all I want to say, because, I mean, the ins and outs of the development of the village are a different matter.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kershaw. Anybody else calling for the second call? I don't hear anybody. And-
Is it possible for me to speak again?
It is possible to speak again, yes. If you have more information to add, please do so. This is Mr. Cowden, it sounds like.
Thank you. Yes, it is. I'm not familiar with this process, but perhaps none of us are, public hearing in this manner. I just wish to emphasize that the Oak Bay Village Business Improvement Association and its members have had a longstanding, fruitful, and amicable relationship in planning and involvement. And I take just about every opportunity to commend Oak Bay, the council, the municipal workers, and all the people in the administration for the cooperation and helping make the Oak Bay Village a vibrant, wonderful place. And if we need any other illustration, example of it, that the lights at Christmas time, the invitation to see people walking up and down the streets in a very casual, comfortable, "I'm at home in the village, shopping. This is my home." It's a beautiful scenario, and it's a result of not just one group, but a collection of groups working together. So I want to emphasize the cooperation factor has been huge, and I think it's nearly unique in our communities to have the various groups of people with different methods but very similar goals, and that's to build community. The Village Business Improvement Association, along with the individual members, desire to build and improve the community around us. And housing for less fortunate people is a commendable cause. But we don't wish to lose sight of what Mr. Roberts has just referred, and I don't know Mr. Roberts, but is that these properties were assumed to be used for the expansion of the village area. And, well, it was made clear that the monies contributed are still in trust, and we've seen that, and there's no question about that. We just wish to emphasize that that's where we see expansion of the community and addition of the village community. We thank the mayor and council and all the people in the district that work together to make our village the vibrant place that it is. And we look forward to working in the near future in the planning process. So thank you. However, we do say that we wish to be a part of any further or future uses for this property. I'd emphasize what Mr. Roberts said was that, how do you ever unscramble this egg? I'm in the food business. How do you ever unscramble this egg? I don't know that. And, well, it's a wonderful thing to do, and I would support it in many ways, let's say, practical ways, because that's what really counts. I would support it in many practical ways, but not on an ongoing basis in that location. I don't need to emphasize the demand on parking in the village. Lots of that parking has been consumed because of COVID restrictions and changing the way we do things. And if businesses are going to survive in the Oak Bay Village, they need to have access to additional parking and additional amenities. And those properties, irrespective of how the wording is placed in official documents, were earmarked for that purpose. So I'm with you guys on council. I'm with the people in this Berks. But that isn't the long-term solution for that property. That property needs to go back to the community as a whole and be used for expanding the village uses and community, because it's the community that uses the village. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cowden. Are there any other new callers have called in?
Yes, Your Worship. There are two additional people who have joined the meeting. There's one by telephone. If you're wanting to speak to council by telephone, if you could use star nine to raise your hand to indicate that you wish to speak, we would acknowledge you. If you've called in on the Zoom platform, please raise your hand using that platform, and we will acknowledge you. Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Could you please state your name and your municipality of residence?
John, Oak Bay.
Can you just give your first and last name and municipality of residence?
What?
Could you please provide your first and last name and your municipality of residence?
Hello?
Hello, can you please provide your first and last name? Can you hear me? Can you provide your first and last name, please, for the record? I think we've lost him, or he's given up. And there is a person by Zoom as well, Ms. Williams?
Yes. Yes, there is, Your Worship, but the individual, or by phone, rather, and that individual has not indicated whether or not they wish to speak. If the person on the phone would like to speak, if you would indicate by hitting star nine on your phone, that will raise your hand, and we can acknowledge you.
Not indicating they wish to speak? Okay. I will then conclude the second round of calls for this. So I'll make a third and final call for public input. Please be reminded that this public hearing is the final opportunity to provide council with comments prior to potential consideration of this proposed bylaw. So this is the third and final call for public input. Again, you can reach us on the, through the numbers provided on the agenda. Again, you can reach us on the, through the numbers provided on the agenda, through Civic Web, or at the bottom of your screen there. I'll give another 30 seconds for anybody who wishes to call in to call in. And I'll just keep talking, because sometimes if people look at a screen and it's quiet, they wonder if it's broken or not and start fiddling with their settings, so I think I will just give a little, say nothing. Well, yeah, I just want to make sure people know that the audio is still working and we are still here. That is 20 seconds. Ms. Williams, has there been anybody else who have called or used Zoom to speak?
Nobody has indicated. Nobody has indicated a desire to speak at this point, Your Worship?
Okay. I'm giving it another five seconds here, just in case. I just want to make sure, this is, we really do want to make sure we're enabling anybody who wishes to speak to speak. I don't see anybody at this time. All right, that, then, that being the third and final call for public input now concluded, being there is no further public input, this public hearing is now closed. I will, excuse me, my voice is going. Now that the public hearing is closed, no further submissions or comments from the public or interested persons can be accepted by members of council. Please be advised that should council need clarification or staff opinion on issues raised at this public hearing or the information associated with the public hearing, council can request such clarification from staff at the January 25, 2021 regular meeting of council, when third reading and adoption of the proposed bylaw will be considered. It should also be noted that as per the Local Government Act, after a public hearing, council may without further notice or hearing adopt or defeat the proposed bylaw or alter and then adopt the bylaw so long as it does not affect use or density.
Your Worship, we did just have one individual who has just joined the meeting. Two individuals have just joined the meeting.
Well, we always want to be as open as possible, but I just want to make sure we're not in contravance of any procedure piece if we... If I've called it closed, can I call it reopened? We have not adjourned the meeting at this point. All I've done is given some direction, next steps.
Yes, Your Worship, I think it would be fair to ask again if anyone would wish to speak.
Okay, so if you wish to speak, I'll reopen the third and final call for public input on this matter. Please, if you wish to speak, please indicate either by star nine if you're calling in by phone, or raise your hand within the Zoom application to indicate that you wish to speak. If we do not have indication you wish to speak, then, oh, I believe we have one who wishes to speak to the matter. No? I'm interpreting body language here from a fair distance away, so I'm not always accurate. I will give it another, say, 30 seconds, though, just given the delay in web streaming, in case they are listening in the wrong place. This is the appropriate chance to hit star nine on the phone if you wish to speak, or raise your hand to speak within the Zoom application. And again, I'll fill the time here with a bit of nothing talk, as we just allow people the chance to respond and play with technology. I am not seeing any of the two new attendees by Zoom or phone indicating that they wish to speak at the public hearing. So I will leave this open for another 10 or 15 seconds or so, just to give people the chance. Again, star nine if you're listening by phone, or raise your hand within the application Nope, okay. So the people attending have not indicated they wish to speak to the public hearing, so I will go back to the piece here, and of course, I've misplaced my final note at the end of the piece. Oh, I don't, I have it here. So I will now call the public hearing concluded, and, yes, just finishing up saying that if per the Local Government Act, if after a public hearing, council may with or without further notice or hearing adopt or defeat the proposed bylaw or alter and then adopt the bylaw so long as it does not affect density. And with that, I believe we just need a motion to adjourn, is that correct? Go ahead, councillor, unless there's any clarifying questions of council, I think those are always welcome at any time before we close. There's not a chance for debate, it's just for clarifying questions. Not seeing any. Oh, go ahead, councillor name.
Yeah, I saw in one of the letters, somebody was asking how this may impact parking, and since there's no reference to that in the bylaw, given there's another 10 residents, I was just wondering through you, Mayor, if we could ask staff to clarify how that issue is dealt with under these circumstances?
Yeah, so I believe Ms. Jensen, if you're still on the phone, the question was just related to the parking, and councillor name was just asking a clarifying question about the parking related to the zoning change, the use change for the zoning.
Didn't David Lau refer to this?
No, Mr. Lau, we're just asking as from the staff, clarifying answer for this question. Ms. Jensen, are you there?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. Yes, you are correct, the zoning bylaw itself would not speak to the parking, rather that would be through the district's parking bylaw. The RS5 zone right now would not consider congregate housing, which is why this is in front of you this evening, but it does speak to congregate housing in other zones. For example, in the P2 zone, congregate housing would be calculated at a rate of three parking spaces per building. So we do have the ability to use that comparison in relation to this site. So in other words, as a congregate housing use, you would need to provide three parking spaces on site. Staff's analysis of the site is that you have enough space there to accommodate that parking.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I think that's a point for council to discuss at the council meeting, but this is not the place for debate, just for clarification. Any other clarifying questions?
Yes, could I ask, I'm muted.
No, we've now concluded the public hearing portion of this meeting, unfortunately, so we can't take any more input at this point, that's the end of the public hearing phase. I was like, that was a voice from beyond the room here coming into the room. Any other questions, clarifying questions, no? So I believe the next item up on the agenda, sorry, my iPad is just not re-unlocking, oh, there it is again, is just a motion to adjourn, I believe.
Move the German?
Second. Any discussion, all those in favor, opposed, and then opposed, thank you very much.
For those of you in the Zoom meeting, I'm about to end the meeting. Thank you for participating.
When you're talking to people there, are they hearing it through your computer or through the microphone, or how is that being amplified?
Through the computer. Yes, and that's actually how they're hearing you as well, but you're speaking into a microphone, so it's...